Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the Bastrop City Council will hold a regular meeting on April 26, 2016, today, at the City Council Chambers, where we are now, to consider the following matters called to order. Call to order: This session with the quorum, Councilmember McAnally is tending to some personal family matters, may or may not be here tonight, will at least be late, and we will keep her in our prayers as we move forward. We are now in a regular session. I will call on our executive director, is that what you are? The executive director of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, who has been here a year and four days and 36 hours, and to lead us in the pledges to the flag.
A year and 20 days.
A year and 20 days, plus a couple hours.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Mayor Protem will lead us in invocation.
Feel free to join me if you'd like. Repeat the Lord's Prayer. Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those trespassing against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Divine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Please be seated. We now hear our monthly report from Mr. Kirkpatrick about EDC. You have visual aids.
We do. With the youth, the Bastrop Youth Career for Bastrop and Cedar Creek High School coming up on May 18th, Gene Rehmansteiner, who heads up Education and Workforce Development for us, as well as Business Retention and Expansion, is here to visit with y'all and give y'all an update on that program, since it's less than a month away. So, Gene Rehmansteiner.
Good evening. We have put together our second annual Career Day for our high school students. We will be hosting 300 students, 150 from Bastrop and 150 from Cedar Creek, and we are targeting that Career Day by the career pathways that the school has implemented. And so, we're a lot more targeted with our business owners trying to pull from the Bastrop area to introduce those students to those career opportunities right here in the community. We have an amazing partnership with the city, with the Chamber, the Bastrop Chamber, and also the Workforce Solutions, as well as BISD, and continue to build that relationship with Bastrop Independent School District to develop those programs and opportunities for our students. The Career Day will happen May 18th, from 9 to noon, so we have a very short timeframe, but it will be very impactful to our students. Do you have anything else to add? Short and sweet.
Thank you.
I was only given three minutes, according to Gary Schiff, so the pledge counts against that, so I'm out of time now. So, but we always want to thank the council, and the mayor, and city manager in our community for supporting us in what we do. This is a very important project and a very collaborative effort across the community. The Adult Job Fair will be in October this year, and we continue to work with Bastrop Independent School District in developing adult education opportunities as we develop these Youth Career Days and Youth Career Clusters through the STEM Program. We had a very good conversation with their representatives today, and looking at what, in the near and long term, the mission there to provide additional vocational, technical training for our adult population in conjunction with what they're doing with the students here in our community. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, otherwise, I'm going to go sit down. All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you. We were asked by the Main Street Board to hear a presentation on a future DMO. Dick, I think Bill Ennis is going to make that report. You're on. No, no, this is just a presentation. He can have all, he can have as long as he wants until we start making faces at him.
I'll rush. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Talbot. My name is Bill Ennis, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of your Main Street Advisory Board. I've been asked to present the Board's recommendations for a destination marketing organization for the city of Bastrop. But first of all, I would like to give you a little background. At the January Main Street Retreat, there was consensus that Main Street developed recommendations for the council for the formation of the DMO. It was decided shortly thereafter that these recommendations be developed by a select committee of two members representing each of the four Main Street standing committees. These folks were chosen by the committees themselves. They are Ann Beck, Sarah Clayton, Keith Gertz, Shonda Hernandez, Catherine Lang, Becca Pentland, Dorothy Scarnulus, and myself. Main Street Chairman Dick Smith asked me to chair the group, and here I'd like to digress for a minute by saying, when I agreed to his request, I didn't know I would be riding this horse all the way to the end. The committee met in late March to compile our thoughts into the document you see before you. It was truly a collaborative effort, with ideas expressed all around the table, and I am pleased to say that when we were finished, we were all in agreement on our recommendations. The document was then presented to the Main Street Board, where it was vetted from beginning to end, and with very substantive changes, few substantive changes, it was approved unanimously. The recommendations: Number one, the Main Street Advisory Board recommends that the destination marketing organization be a city entity different from the city's usual departmental structure. It is critically important that this DMO structure allow for quick response to opportunities and deadlines that are inherent in the marketing industry. The DMO should be a nonprofit, responsive to the city council and city manager, with direct accountability to the city council. The DMO should make regular reports to the council and city manager regarding its operations through an appointed representative. The DMO should be governed by a board, referred to later by "the board," chosen by the city council. The MSAB recommends this board be comprised of seven members. These members should be chosen from a pool of the city's marketing stakeholders, with staggered revolving terms to ensure continuity of mission. Stakeholder representation on the board and revolving terms would ensure responsiveness to the entities having an interest in distance marketing. The board should participate in the interviewing and hiring of an experienced director, hereafter called the director, who will work with the board to formulate an organizational structure that best meets the goals of the DMO, and subsequently to recommend this structure to council for endorsement. The MSAB recommends that the board exercise direct oversight of the DMO operation through its director, who shall be responsible for the day-to-day operations within parameters set by the board. This being said, the MSAB recommends that the DMO's work be performed by a combination of a small staff and/or independent contractors, all working under the direct supervision of the director, who in turn answers to the board of stakeholders. Council retains ultimate financial authority for funding the DMO annual budget and marketing plan. Number three, the MSAB recommends that the current hot grant program be continued and under the coordination of the DMO board. In other words, the DMO board with assistance from its director and input from the stakeholder community should set priorities for distance marketing and the components needed to achieve these goals. In turn, the DMO board should receive applications from current and future stakeholders for funding of their efforts which contribute to these marketing goals. In this manner, the city's current marketing experience would not be ignored, while at the same time, new contributors to the marketing effort could be encouraged, all while fitting within the DMO's overall plan. The MSAB recommends that the DMO not only serve to develop and implement Bastrop's message to its outside audiences, which is its primary objective, but to mentor and assist the city's stakeholders in applying this message in their own promotions and marketing. This would include guidance in developing marketing assets, including social media. It would also be important for the DMO to develop keywords, et cetera, to be incorporated into the content of all online outlets for maximized placement in the various search engines. But while this guidance should be a part of DMO's charge, it should not be construed to constitute the actual implementation for stakeholder-driven promotion, of stakeholder-driven promotion. That would be left to stakeholders in question. The MSAB also sees the DMO as a resource for analytics, not only for assessing the progress and effectiveness of its own programs, but to serve as a resource for the effectiveness of its stakeholder efforts in distance marketing. Finally, the MSAB recommends that funding for hard asset developments, the arts, sports, preservation, et cetera, be isolated and receive council's separate consideration for hot funding. If a need for this type of development exists or rises in the future, the council should determine the worthiness of the project with the advice and counsel of the DMO. Further, it is the MSAB's recommendation that the council continue to award, administer these types of grants.
Questions from anyone? Is this pretty clear? Pretty concise and obviously well-written. Will you, okay, I mean Kelly, do you have something?
We can comment on the presentation.
Yeah, we can talk about this as a presentation, you have my mic. It's on the agenda, yeah, sure. You want to say something?
You know, I don't know what the timeframe is for the council to move in a direction that we need to move in to consider what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, but, you know, some things for me, as we listen to, this is the third group, I think, the Chamber, Division Group, and now the Main Street Advisory Board. And to me, I was just, probably just for myself, I haven't heard anybody mention this since these discussions started with the last three, with the last three people, three groups that spoke to the council, was that, I know in one, in one meeting, somebody said that there was almost three-quarters of the people that had DMO, or the cities that had DMOs, were outside entities, separate from the, entities separate from the city department, controlled by the council. And, you know, my deal was if we had a list of those groups, or the staff could get a list of those groups, I'd like to follow up, or staff or Mike follow up and see, see, I guess one of the questions I'd ask is why you chose to go that route versus an in-house city department? How's it working for you, and if there was anything else that you'd do different, if you had the chance to do it all over again? Those were just things that I thought about since I heard the first meeting, first hearing from the Chamber, but I haven't spoke with anybody because I didn't know what track we were on, how fast we were moving on this.
Yeah, well, I think there's a lot of energy, let me just let Kelly speak.
It's okay, Ken, go ahead.
I was going to say, there's a lot of energy in the community about this, and so much so that we've had, only we've ever had three entities come and make a report to us about anything. And I want to make sure that the city secretary has this report in our file with the other two. We, you know, we're, we're moving at a little different pace, in fact, a quite different pace. You know, Mike has information from citizens and council members about a request for proposal to put out to get a consultant to help us work through this process. So, we're, you know, we have a long way to go on this, but I think more information we have, the better we are. This is good information, and it helps us down the road and maybe frame some of the questions that we'll be asking as we go forward, and certainly what you raised, Mayor Protem, is, are very important questions. So, I think that we, we, council needs to remain steady, move forward with our plan, work with Mike to work through the process. I think somebody, one of the things I hope, this is just my personal desire, is some, one of these groups suggested we ought to be done by the end of calendar year 2016. I think that's a pretty good goal, and Mike can get moving in a hurry now that he can present, start getting ready for hiring a consultant, which I think will make things go very quickly, and will work with, help us work through, you know, the right processes to take a look at all the considerations that we should be going after. And so, I think that's where we are, and I appreciate very much, I want to say to you, Bill and Dick, thank y'all for the foresight to come through with this, and all the people that worked on it, good information. We probably are, as I just said, not quite ready to deal with the kind of details. We got to get a consultant first, but this is very good information that's in the bag for us to take a look at as we go forward. Kelly.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned the consultant. It was a real interesting presentation with the citizen input on what they wanted to see for potential RFQ, and I think that the consultant is tasked to answer some of the questions the Mayor Protem had about, you know, what form and why, why they went this way, and what size were the different cities, that sort of thing. But the other thing is, I wanted to remind everybody that on Friday, the County Department of Tourism and the Chamber have invited a DMO expert to speak, and I don't know if you guys are attended, but I signed up to go, and they're going to give some information about DMOs as well, so we're still collecting information.
Well, I hope you will collect, whoever's there from the council or the staff, I hope will collect all the information you can, because you can't have too much information when you start to work through these things.
Right. Well, I'm going for sure, so I'll bring back what I have, in case you guys aren't going.
Thank you. Mike, you, anything? Have we stated pretty much where we are?
Yes, we did have a meeting last Thursday night. We'll have a draft of the RFQ out hopefully next week sometime to receive some comments, and hopefully by either the first or second council meeting in May, we'll be bringing it forth to the council for your approval to send out.
Well, that's good. I think the, I think we're all eager to get moving. But we don't, we also, if somebody repeats something else, I think Mike has reminded us of repeatedly, that we don't, this, we have a lot of money at stake here over the next 10 years. We don't want to make any mistakes, and we want to make sure we put the right kind of organization together that will be the absolute correct thing for our community going forward. Thank you all, and we move to citizens' comments. And I've got one request here, but others want to speak, please fill out your form, and we'll get you on. Kevin? Kevin Whale.
Yes, sir. My name's Kevin Whale. I spoke two weeks ago on April 12th, and voiced my opposition to the re-subdivision of the Whale subdivision Lot 1 property. The following statement was made at that meeting, quote, "You can't tell another property owner what to do with their property," end quote. Maybe that is true, but the voices of the people, the voices of the other property owners can. We live in a representative democracy, a democracy in which the elected officials should represent the voices of the people, their constituents, those who elected them to offices such as mayor and city council. I hold in my hand copies of the property owners' responses to the re-subdivision. There are seven written and one verbal. Of the eight total responses, six of the property owners, I repeat, six of the property owners, were opposed to the re-subdivision. That should have sent a clear message to you, the city council members of Bastrop, Texas. Seventy-five percent of the property owners, seventy-five percent of your constituents, seventy-five percent of the voices of the people who elected you to office, an overwhelming majority opposed the re-subdivision, but you failed to listen. What message does that send to the citizens, your constituents, of the city of Bastrop, Texas? Those same people who elected you to the office, where you now sit and govern. I know what message that sends to me. My dad was one of the property owners who submitted his response in opposition. My dad served as a police officer, city of Bastrop Police Department, 13 years, 30 years as a volunteer fireman. He serves currently on the Fairview Cemetery Association Board, under the auspices of the city of Bastrop. His voice deserved to be heard. He has served his hometown, but the voice fell on deaf ears. I applaud Councilman Willie De La Rosa for doing the right thing, for voting against the re-subdivision at 709 Hill Street. Willie, you listen to the voices and the opinions of the property owners, your constituents, the people, and for that, on behalf of my family and fellow property owners, we say thank you. As for the four who voted in favor of the re-subdivision, I say this: If you didn't want our opinions or value our opinions as property owners, then why bother asking for our opinions in the first place? My hometown has, is, and always will be Bastrop, Texas. I live in Bastrop, Texas. I don't live in Austin. I don't live in Houston. I live in Bastrop. Don't try to make Bastrop into an Austin or Houston suburb. Finally, you do not live in my neighborhood. The voices of the property owners, in my neighborhood spoke. The voices of those who elected you to office spoke. The majority spoke, seventy-five percent, and they spoke loudly, but you didn't listen. Thank you, Willie.
Thank you, Mr. Whale. Anybody else want to have anything to say under citizens' comments? We, Doc, do we have anything to report from the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee?
Not at this time for me. I mean, I was, I don't know if Melissa wants to say anything at all, or about what's been happening, but I don't have anything to report, but she seems to be coming forward.
I was just going to say, you do have all the draft chapters online on the city's website.
Ms. McCollum is a director, you're the staff liaison director of this thing? Yes, sorry, thank you. Melissa McCollum, Director of Planning and Development.
And you can go to planbastrop.org. I'll take you to the city's website, where, with the new updated website, we're able to put pictures, although, looks like it went down here, but with a comprehensive plan, and then on this front page here are all the draft chapters currently available, 1 through 4, and there's also some, some images, some of the feedback we received from the surveys, and some of the graphs and statistics in the area, and then also down here on the bottom of the same webpage, you can enter your email address to be invited to future information, future meetings for the comprehensive plan meetings, and then also in this little box on the right here, you can also provide feedback regarding the comp plan. So, with the new website, we're really able to do some things we weren't able to do previously.
And the draft chapters are, is preliminary report from the task force itself. Is that correct?
Correct. The task force has reviewed these chapters. These are chapters of the comprehensive plan, so we'll continue to get input from the public, but if we have some public that want to get out there and start reading them a little bit early, here they are, because they are available.
But I'm saying, well, say, Chapter 2, for example, in Community Growth, we've been through whatever the consultants came up with, what the staffs reported, and the task force has signed off on it at that point.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And the reason I ask, if somebody's watching for the first time.
I'm going to fix your problem. The reason I ask, Doc introduced you, but probably somebody that was watching TV for the first time wouldn't know who you were, and the mayor, if the mayor introduces you as the planner or something like that, they know when you walk up to the microphone to speak, but if somebody's watching for the first time, when you walk up, somebody, and that goes to other department heads as well, to announce that. So, those at home that are watching don't know who's speaking from the city.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you for partnering with me, Willie. Good point.
And thank you, Ms. McCollum, for pitching that in for me. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Just mentioned the one item, special meeting we're going to have that we talked about last week. I'm going to guess at who's here for what, and change the order of our agenda a bit, try to get what I think affects people that have come down here to do first, and, well, let me just ask this question. Anybody here to hear about capital improvements projects, possible bond issues? Well, that shows how smart I am. That's off the list. How about future use of our lot at 921 Main Street? Yeah, let's go with that. Let me, this is out of D8, consideration discussion of possible action regarding the future use of and are the disposition of the city-owned lot at 921 Main Street. I'm aware that we have been talking about this ever since we bought that piece of property. We bought the property, the reason, here's the reason I posted it. We bought that property in order to buy part of Alley D. We had some businesses downtown, Mike discovered that were we not to not own that, or not have public easement or something, we had people trying to run businesses downtown that couldn't get to the back end of their buildings. So, we bought a total piece of property that included that Main Street frontage, and that was not our initial purpose, but now we have what I call the slab, now we have a, we have a slab down at 921 Main Street. We have talked many, many times about what we ought to do with it. There have been people that have talked back and forth about, we ought to put it on the tax rolls, get commercial use, get some sales tax out of it, get somebody using it. We had the Main Street Program present to us a pretty comprehensive view, I think four years ago, talking about how it ought to be a city park. We've been back and forth about that. I think some, you know, some of us thought, if we wait a while till we have more access to hotel occupancy tax money, we might could do something with it. Is all of you, all of you who have been downtown know, you've seen that we're working on that piece of property, not because we need to paint the slab green or something, but we've got some problems with that piece of property that we've got to fix, and it's not going to be real cheap to do it. So, I think the time has come, and that's why I posted this, for us to make a decision. Are we going to keep that piece of property and spend the money to fix it, and use it for a downtown entity of some sort of gathering pace, or whatever it may be? Or are we going to go ahead and sell it as is, or fix it up and sell it, and get some of our money back, and let some commercial venture go in there and get it on the tax rolls? So, I think it's, I think it's important for us to get some kind of a decision, Mike, before too long, and waiting seven years has probably been way too much. Mike?
I just want to clarify, give a couple points. The Alley D project was actually on 2003 ballot election that was approved by the voters, and it did envision buying the 921 lot. And the reason it did is because that was the only lot that ran from Main Street to Water Street, and that's why the council desired to purchase that, along with another parcel, which took longer than we had anticipated. And so, this has been an evolving process, but it did start with the voters requesting that the council put this on, with the overall objective of increasing parking, as I understand, because I wasn't here, to increase parking in the downtown.
Yeah, and, but the slab, we're not, is kind of incidental to the major goal.
Yes.
Even though it was, it was called out in the bond election. Thank you for that clarification, Mike. So, I want, I know that we have asked the Main Street Design Committee if they wanted to have something to say at this point, and anyone else that wants to talk about it, and I just want to give an opportunity for anybody to do that, and the council, you know, won't talk about selling property without advice from the council, so we'll, you know, we'll do that in real specific terms in an executive session, but I think a general conversation about whether we ought to keep it for the community, or we ought to sell it, is what I hoped we would be talking about today. So, Dan, I know we asked you, your committee, to, if you wanted to have something to say to follow up on what you did several years ago, do you, do you have something to say? And I'll, I'll call on you, and you can talk as long as you want, and I'll let you introduce yourself.
Dan Hayes Clark, co-chair of Design Committee for Main Street. Mike had asked us about, I'm going to say about three weeks back, the Design Committee to put together a proposal again as to what our commitment to using 921 as a public gathering space, or as a plaza for downtown, and I'm going to hand this out because I don't know if.
That's in her packet, I think.
Basically, we're here to say that we're still here committed to reviewing the property, reviewing the needs and the possible uses of the property, and bringing that back to council again. So, we're here to work under the direction of city council for the use of the 921 property. But again, we still see that it's, it's being, that its use as a respite, parking access, performance venue, or also for vendors and a gathering space is what the Design Committee performance venue, or also for vendors and a gathering space is what the Design Committee currently is standing behind and committed to continuing the research for. Any questions?
I know we caught you kind of short. I mean, I admit that this kind of, we didn't give a whole lot of notice to the community. That's the only reason I think we need to have that more general conversation right here. Do you think if y'all had more time to study on it, you might have something more to say?
You have to remember that we did this study in 2010. That was, what, six years ago? It's six years ago. We weren't looking at redoing Main Street. We didn't have the museum set up there. We didn't have the visitor center set up there with public restrooms. So some of the things have changed. What we were talking about doing with wider sidewalks, changing the parking, those type of things are still up in the air as well because we haven't gone that far yet on our design for the Main Street refurbishing. So we would look at it of, yes, if we took this back to us and we had it for another meetings worth of time, two meetings worth of time to go through it, relook at all of our old information, see what we can do to incorporate this as a meeting space along with solving the problems with the slabs and the neighbors next door and the buildings next door, the drainage issues, the back wall issue, and still keeping access to the parking lots, we'd be more than happy to jump into this.
But you would want some?
We would need it.
You would need some direction to the Main Street Board from us. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, please.
Are you, I'm sure you're aware, because it's had to be an American speaking, I know Mr. Schiff can, because he's been a longtime member of the BDC. Are you aware, when you just brought up about the sidewalks in Main Street, the improvements that the BDC was funding then, and y'all came back for another, we've been, and I think, I just want to make sure that y'all understood, or the Main Street Board understood, that all BDC was going to put in was the original amount?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And that's why we're completely sitting on hold, waiting for Mike's direction on anything we can do to that project as well.
Well, it's what happens with a lot of things that we do. We sit on hold because, and initially, we were going to go in and do sidewalks, run a water line down the street, and redo all of Main Street. And now we're sitting here waiting on whether we want to widen the sidewalk or not, but that's going to fall on the backs of this group right here tonight, out of the general fund, whether we're going to spend more money or the original money that BDC was going to spend when it first came around, two or three years ago.
Right, and I believe that is.
As long as y'all have been told that, that's cool with me, because we took a vote at the BDC. The mayor was there as part of it, I think, when Terry Orr was still mayor.
I know that our committee has been told that. We've been given that information, and the last information that we presented to the city, and that's for the Main Street Improvement Project, that wasn't for the 921. But for the Main Street Improvement Project, we did give that information back to Mike as what, four? I believe we pulled that down to four things, which was lighting, public access, and public safety. There was one more item that was our main need that we would see incorporating into that project, if that project was to go forward. And at the time, it was on hold for the 71 reconstruct. So we're perfectly happy with staying with where we are and making sure that we're in the loop, working with, in tandem with the city as that project moves forward. Great.
Thank you. Okay, Debbie Moore, and then I'll turn to the council.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name's Debbie Moore. I've been involved with the Downtown Business Alliance since it began ten, ten years ago, and I was on the original Main Street Board, and I now serve as the P&amp;Z ad hoc member to the Main Street Board. And I say that to give you a little background of my involvement with 921. It has been, DBA had a contract with the city for use of 921 for several years. It became used as a music venue, as a gathering space, as a registration space for the wine swirl, and for a number of community spontaneous and planned events. We have presented, I don't remember now if it was DBA or the Main Street Board, they kind of overlap, some studies that showed when they were downtown gathering spaces for old cities like ours, which is very unusual, that if there was a respite area, that people tended to stay longer in the downtown area, spend more money, which is good for our downtown shops. And I'm sure we could dredge that up and give you some updated information, because I doubt it's changed. At the time that the DBA lease with the city was terminated because of wall, of structure problems and the back wall problems, we had a major local business who was interested in doing a public-private partnership to put substantial money into 921 to help make it even a better gathering space. But when the lease was tendered, that kind of fell apart. But there is substantial interest in keeping it as a gathering space and as a beneficial asset to our downtown. So I hope we will have a time for additional input from the citizenry and from the downtown businesses to the council before any decision would be made, and I hope we keep it as a gathering space. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members. Gary?
Yeah, I really liked Dan Hayes-Clark's recommendation of, or your recommendation to Dan, to go back to the drawing board if it hasn't been looked at in six years. Look at what the impact of the visitor center, of just the changes downtown, the increase in business, the nature of what is going on with the parking, the impact of the new parking that's being planned for in the back, and how the traffic, pedestrian traffic between new parking and the downtown area would be impacted. I'd like to see some really deep thought and look, have that group look at how this would impact whether we, whether this space becomes retail space or becomes public space, how either one of those aspects impacts the downtown area, particularly the south end.
Kay, welcome. We're talking about, just in general terms, about whether we ought to keep our property on 911 Main Street for whatever use, or, what did I say, 921? 911 is another thing. 921, or sell it for commercial, put it on the tax roll kind of thing, just in general terms. We've heard from a couple of, well, from Main Street Design Committee, from Debbie Moore, and just heard from Gary. So I'll let you catch up as we go along. Glad you were able to make it. Other comments about this?
Can I just ask a question? We're not deciding on this tonight.
Yeah, I hope we won't make a decision.
Will or won't?
I hope we won't.
Right.
I'm fully aware, as I said earlier, I can spring this on people, but I think at some point, we got to start moving to make a decision on this. We can't just keep stringing it out for another seven years. So I think we, and I also told the public that we aren't going to talk about disposition of property, sales and things without advice from our attorney, and we would do that in executive session. So we, and Gary just mentioned, you may have heard the end of it, that, you know, maybe we need to study this a little bit more in the light of recommendation from the Main Street Design Committee that hasn't looked at it in six years. So, Doc?
I'd like to speak because I've been on the Main Street Board since its inception, and I serve now. I've been both a citizen and as the council representative on the board, and previously did work a little bit with DBA as well. And all through all these years and all these different events and things that Debbie, I'd like to kind of support what Debbie was saying and what the Main Street Board was said, mentioned at our last meeting, and it's kind of outlined in the proposal that came from the Design Committee. And we were very much in favor of keeping it as an anchor or point of orientation or reference for the Central Business District because it's been used in many ways for many different projects downtown. It's a good place for people to meet and greet. We've used it for music venues. We've used it with special events. It just, it creates a place for people to go, and I know we do have the restrooms now at the visitor center, we have other things, but it's really been a nice place for people to meet and greet, and other cities have a place like that in their downtown area. And I feel very strongly that we need to consider that. We've been putting it off for many years, and a group of people have continued to utilize it until, of course, recently, when it was unable to be used, but there's been continuous support, and I see several people in the audience that have supported that and want to continue to support that, because it is an attractive spot that could be used for that, and I think it would be really beneficial for us to utilize it to, not only for our visitors, but for our local residents as well. And I will continue to support that, and even if I'm not on the council, I'll come back and I'll be talking about that when you do make your decision.
Thank you, Doc. You got anything? Kay? Anything you want to say? I know you're a little behind the curve here, but.
The only thing is, I would, I would just like to hear pros and cons and not, we've taken seven years so far to talk about this thing, and I don't know how many times it's been brought up and no decision is made. I would not want to rush to make a really important decision like this in one or two council meetings. I'd want to see all the information.
Mike, I think, Doc?
No, I just wanted, I mean, the council, and I think we need to maybe share this Design Committee proposal to the, with the community and with, you know, others, just let them see what those points were that were stressed. I think those are some very, it's very concise and some very good points about why it should remain a central plaza at 921. So we didn't mention, I'll just go through the points real quickly for you, just for the audience members that may not have a copy of this or may not have seen the agenda, but it's to establish an anchor and point of orientation or reference for the Central Business District, to provide a logical, central, and attractive accessway from the Water Street parking to the heart of the Main Street shopping and dining area, to create a pleasant green space respite that would tend to encourage shoppers and others to spend additional time in the Main Street area, to serve as an excellent centrally-located gathering spot for both daily use and for tours and other groups. It serves as an excellent, well, I just said that, provide an attractive, audience-friendly venue for performances that might accommodate possibly up to 200 people, to allow event vendors spaced with appropriate electrical service, a safer alternative to running extension cords from Main Street buildings that we have been doing in the past. And these are some of the recommendations, and they all seem very logical to me, and it just seems like it would be a win-win situation for not only our downtown visitors, but our downtown merchants and for the community at large.
Richard Smarzick.
Hi, I'm Richard Smarzick, council members, mayor. I'm one of the neighbors at Jun, 921. I have water diversion issues as a result of it. Long term, I think it needs a roof. Water diversion issues are not going to go away with a green space. Water diversion issues are not going to go with continually the slab uncovered. So ultimately, whether it's bought or fixed, it needs a roof. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that leaves me to say something that Kay didn't hear me say earlier. Reason I think there's an urgency on this is we've got to make a decision if we're going to spend some money on fixing, mitigating the problems that we have there, and that's what makes me less tolerant of waiting any longer on this. And we, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be to do whatever we do. So I think it's time. I don't know what the timeframe is, I won't argue that, but I think we can't sit around waiting a whole lot longer to get a decision made and so that Mike can move ahead with whatever we need to do. Kelly?
Mike, do we have an engineering report on that property?
A verbal one.
Can you get us something about what, what the problems are with that?
Sure. So, Mike, you've heard some comments about what you might want to have a conversation with, with Main Street Director and advising the board and so forth, some information, information Kelly just asked you for, things we've talked about before about the mitigation that has to be taken care of one way or the other on that property, if it's going to be held long-term by anybody. And I know that if there's a conversation about legal things and sales and those sort of things, we'll talk about that in the appropriate moment. But I think you've, I think we've aired this, I think this sort of repeated some of the general things we've been saying for a long time, just to say sooner or later, you have to make a decision. So Mike has some information. I know he will study and get back to us, and we'll move on to the next item. We moved to consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. We'll vote on them unless someone wants to move, remove one of them. We'll vote them together. I don't hear anybody wanting to pull one of them, so Willie moves. Are you making a motion, Willie?
Making a motion, we approve it. A one.
Seconded by Gary. Will you call the roll in, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Galilean?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Thank you all. Under Old Business, item C one is consideration discussion of possible action on the second reading of an ordinance in the city of Bastrop, Texas, adopting a water conservation plan in accord with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality and Texas Water Development Board Regulations, providing a severability and an effective date. And this is left over from our storm abbreviated meeting. And I will turn to either Mike or Mr. Joe, and here's Mr. Joe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This water conservation plan is a requirement that we have to update every five years for the TCEQ and the Texas Water Development Board. We're basically updating it from the 2010 ordinance. In your packet, you have attached the new water conservation plan with some more goals and strategies that we've, we're going to be applying over the next five years. And if you have any questions.
I take it you feel good about it, or you wouldn't have brought it to us?
It's very good. We, we're actually getting close to some target goals that, I mean, obviously, the water that we already have is the cheapest water you can have, so we put some pretty aggressive goals in here that I think will help improve that.
Kelly?
Yeah, I read through your proposal here, Trey, and I really like it, and I would like to make a motion that we adopt it.
Is there a second? Okay, Willie seconds, and Willie, you're on.
Yes, I think anything that you bring forward, like a conservation plan or other deals, in my opinion today, water is still our number one issue for our citizens. In other words, to make sure we deliver safe, clean drinking water, number one, to our customers, and continue on acquiring future water resources for 30, 40 years down the road. So I was glad to second this deal on the conservation plan.
Good, thank you.
Kelly?
I'm good.
Anybody else? I think the council's ready to vote.
Councilmember Galilean?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Thank you all. Item C two, I think, is a kind of public hearing and action item. Mike, is that the way we looked at this last time? Or is it just a plain old public hearing? Can you turn your mic on?
We rushed out of here last time at, because of the inclement weather that we were facing, and if we closed the public hearing, then we're good. But I, the way we rushed out of here, I'm not quite clear if you officially closed the public hearing for citizens' input.
Well, I guess my question is, I'd be happy for this to be a public hearing, but it's also posted for action. So last time, we talked about the fact that it was, the nature of it allows us to do something like, consider this as a public hearing, and we'll try to ask people not to make any motions, and at some point, we'll quit listing to the public and kind of allow motions, and then we can talk about it. And I think that's legal, as far as I can tell.
Could I, could I jump in, Mayor?
Sure.
I thought we had a public hearing, I thought we closed it, and we were in a rush to get out, but Mike brought up one other quick agenda item, and I don't know which, what it was, but I don't remember it.
It was a conservation plan.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think we need to revisit this. My only question is procedure here. I mean, I'm perfectly happy for us to talk about it, but I'll just ask Jacey, since she's sitting there, does that make sense, what I'm talking about?
The public hearing was closed. There was confusion about the appropriate action to be taken. We offered to bring it back to you. I think the staff has a clarified, easier-to-understand approach to this that will help you work through it. I don't believe we have a public hearing to hold tonight. I think that was taken care of last night. If you're concerned about that, you're welcome to open a public hearing and deal with that tonight, but it is up for action tonight.
Well, I'm going to say that if, without objection, there's objection, we'll talk about it. Without objection, I'm going to scratch public hearing off this agenda.
I think that's fine. We held a public hearing last time and concluded it and moved on from there.
The advice of the council is it's fine for me to scratch. and for the secretary to scratch public hearing off this thing. But I'm not going to not have a public hearing that's posted without some kind of help from the council. So, is there... If there's no objection, that's what I'm going to do. I don't... Not hearing any objection, we're going to assume that was a... What do you call those things? Scribner's error?
Yes, sir.
We'll call it a Scribner's error. And we're going to have now consideration, discussion, and possible action on a variance to subdivision ordinance, section 5.501B, a corner lot in a section north of town. And I don't think I need to do... I need to read this whole thing. And we heard about it a lot at the last meeting. So, I'm going to call Ms. McCollum to provide some kind of clarification on this.
Thank you, mayor, council. This is a continuation of the item that was before you at the 12th meeting. And essentially, why we're here this evening is we're really talking about the corner lot, which is Lot 2 on the exhibit that I showed you. And the blue is the property, has... Is proposing to have a 60-foot lot width instead of the 75-foot lot width that is required as part of the subdivision ordinance. So, the variance that we're really seeking this evening is for Lot 2. And city council is the approval authority for subdivision variances. And again, the subdivision variances... The requirement is the one that's necessitating our having that as 75 feet. So, in this case, the subdivision requires that a minimum of corner lots to be 75 feet. The developer is seeking approval to have the lot on Water Street with... For Lot 2, to be 60... A little over 60 feet instead of the 75 feet. And that's required as part of the subdivision code. And before you is approval or denial to allow Lot 2 to have a 60-foot lot width instead of 75. I'm going to go ahead and pull up that exhibit that I just handed out to you this evening. And essentially, what I was trying to do is really show existing properties in the surrounding area and what their current lot widths are. Honestly, most of the lots... Some of the corner lots in the surrounding property area are even less than the required zoning ordinance requirement of 60 feet. So, you can see each of these lots have less requirement of that. And many of the lots have... Are obviously less than 60, therefore, less than the 75-foot requirement for the zoning ordinance.
Really? So, basically, this back... We're real simple. They want a 15-foot variance?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Melissa, is the only lot with a variance issue, the corner lot? Or do they all require a variance?
It would be for the subdivision ordinance, it would be this Lot 2, the corner lot.
Only the... Everything else meets your ordinance?
Correct.
Ken?
Yes.
Yeah, I would comment that, as I recall, at the last meeting, the question arose, were there other lots in the neighborhood that were similarly narrow? And Melissa, at the time, didn't have an answer. And she came back with this map, which I think definitely shows that a lot of... Many of the lots in that area have as wide or narrow or even narrower than what is being asked for here. And I think it's certainly a reasonable subdivision request. I think it's... I would... In fact, I'll move to approve this request.
I'll second it.
I have a question. Willie? I have a motion. Doc, you want to go first? Then I'll ask Willie.
No, I was just going to second, but this is already...
Okay, well, I've got a second. So, Willie?
I'm just... I'm going to say just something, Mr. Schiff. But, you know, some of those lots probably maybe have old houses on them. And they're probably were grandfathered in at a certain time. But unless somebody comes in and does something similar to 1, 2, and 3 on that one corner, I hope the next person that comes in, we provide some kind of consistency instead of just approving this one and go Block 2 down the street and deny them the same opportunity that we're doing down here on Magnolian Water.
Well, doesn't that beg the question of whether the ordinance is correct or not? I mean, you know, if it's okay to have a 60-foot lot on a corner, why don't we change the ordinance? I don't understand why we have an... I mean, is it ordinance or whatever it is? Subdivision ordinance?
It is.
And we're talking about making a change because it sort of makes sense here. And nobody seems to care. But why wouldn't we just go ahead and ask the planning department, the planning and zoning, and figure out how to change this? Well, it's not a big deal. I mean, Mike, I mean, that's what I talked to you about this afternoon, I think. And you have a much better answer than I have.
Well, as we discussed, you know, normally, your subdivision applies to your infrastructure elements. But there are some provisions in lot layouts. And clearly, subdivision ordinances are oriented towards new development and new lots. And here, you have an existing old town site that is wanting some development. And it runs into conflict with some of our ordinances. That has, in my experience, has not been atypical. And I don't think we would want to change the ordinance for an atypical situation.
Is... So, is this similar to... I know the scope of it or whatever is different. But the reason we have a... One of the reasons we have a zoning board of adjustment is because we had a lot of property in Bastrop that's not laid out like Riverside Grove or Pecan Park. And then we have a... Long ago, where we didn't have any rules about anything. And so, we've got some odd configurations of things. And sometimes, you can't put a garage in without it being a horrible hardship. And so, even though this is different, the spirit of it is the same. What we're doing today is sort of like what zoning board of adjustments allowed to do when they make... When they allow adjustments and...
Yes, and I think if you look at what created or what was the emphasis behind the creation of the zoning board of adjustments, it was to deal with issues in older cities that have this particular situation. And as we discussed, that's a statutory created body that the legislature has required the city to create. It is the only quasi-tudicial body that we have in the city. And again, that's because of legislative intent behind the creation of that body. I don't think... And because of the... They deal with zoning issues. The council deals with ordinances. And you have a variety of ordinances that you have periodically, from time to time, given a variance or something of that nature, when there's just something that just doesn't quite fit the overall scope. And I think that's what you have here tonight.
I think Mike hit it on the head when he said it's an old town track lot or lots that were there probably and had the same structure on there that when we revised the subdivision ordinance and stuff like that, were grandfathered in. Unless they do something different with them, I mean, they're going to stay that way.
Yeah, and we were thinking... We were thinking new when we passed that... At least, to my predecessors, passed that ordinance. They were thinking new and develop and all that kind of stuff. You've got to figure out the infill, and it's difficult. And this is an example of why it's difficult.
And I think it's another reason why the Form-based code ought to be extended into this area of Bastrop. Look at, you know, what does this part of town really need to be able to do infill? What kind of flexibility does it need? And what, you know, what should be the rules of the road going forward?
Is that part of the focus of the North Area Task Force?
Yes, I would just say that this application has preceded any results from the Form-based code.
But it's the sort of thing that we're talking about up there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Gary, so we're working on it. Okay.
Yeah, I have a question for Mike. Before, when we had... When we changed the Form-based codes in the city, did it cost us a lot of money to do that? And if we were just to extend that same thinking to the north side, would it be an expense that we couldn't handle?
Well, I mean, there's going to be an expense because... But I don't think if you... If the council were to maintain the task force that created the first Form-based code, I think we would experience an economy of scale because the first time around, it was a learning experience for the staff, myself, for the Form-based Code Task Force members, and I think even for planning and zoning in city council. But now, we've been through that process. And we would need some assistance from the consultant in writing because you may want to make some tweaks here as you move up into another area. And I don't think we just want to just flat overlay an area without doing some analysis and study. But I just don't think it would take as long, second and third time around, than it did the first time.
Would it be premature to say, let's get this... Could you go away and look at this idea? And then let's put it on the agenda and see if that's what we want to do?
Sure.
Or how would you like it, Kay, since budget's coming up anyway, for Mike to see if he can figure out some way to work that kind of expense into the new budget?
Yeah, that would be...
Instead of having the action could be the budget?
That could be absolutely fine.
But I would like to meet with the Form-based Task Force and get their input as to where they logically see the next extension coming because they really did do the heavy lifting on the last one.
And they did a fabulous job.
Okay, is that... So, is that okay with you, Kay? If you purchase it that way?
Yes.
Okay, that's very timely. If it were... Other part of the year might be different. Yeah, go ahead. You're on.
Okay, I'm afraid I missed the part where we could put things on the agenda, asked for them to be put on. Kay, is it possible to go back to that? Or should we just go forward and ask privately?
You can talk to me after meeting.
That's fine.
We don't have a city manager report.
Okay, that's fine.
What are we doing? We're voting. Y'all ready to vote? Kay, are you saying anymore?
No, I'm done.
Y'all ready to vote? I think we're ready to vote. Ann, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnally?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Del Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you, Melissa. And thank you for the explanation. And we've passed beyond the storm.
Melissa, thank you for doing this picture, too. This helps me. Thank you.
New business? On the advice of the Bastrop Parks and Public Places Board, or at least informally, I appoint Bill Ennis to play 7 on that board. Second.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Ennis also serves on some other boards, I believe?
He serves on the Planning and Zoning Board.
So, didn't we have a rule that one person, one board?
We don't have a rule.
I thought we did.
We don't have a rule.
It's not a rule? It's just a...
We talked about it. And we, you know, we try... I'll say to you that I had two or three communications with the chair of this board saying, are you sure this is the person you want? Because he's on another board. And they said to me, what is in your packet? And I'm doing it on their advice because what I did ask them to do was to come up with a mail. I said, you know, six women and one man, or seven women and one man, something. And I said, I want another man on there. And that's what they... You know, that's what they gave me. So, I mean, I'm very supportive of Mr. Ennis. I think he would be a great board member. But I, you know, try to not... We've got a few cases where you have two people... I mean, one person serving on two boards. And it's rare. And I think this is a case where I'm taking the advice from a board that's... Everybody just loves what they're doing. And they're working really hard to try to provide, you know, the right kind of mix. And I'm taking their advice in this appointment.
I'd just like to say that I, too, have... I was delighted when I saw Bill Ennis's application. I think he'd be absolutely perfect for this board. But I also understand how one of our goals... My understanding was that we were trying to, since we have so much talent out there, spread the talent around and be sure that we get new people on boards and commissions. So, I understand that point of view, too. And I'm not really sure how we clarified that. My understanding was... I didn't know... First of all, let me say, I didn't know Mr. Ennis was on P&amp;Z when I was jumping up and down with excitement that he was joining us. And I'm still doing that. But I think the idea was if we couldn't find somebody else that could bring what we needed to the table, that we would look at that. Does anybody remember how that went?
I think we talked about it. We would do our best, exactly what you said, you know? And I think we... And also, that we understood that there'd be cases where we had certain individuals that were uniquely qualified in two places, and we really needed them. That's what I'm hearing from the board. I would... You know, I can go out and find somebody. But I would much rather, as well as they are doing, and the fact that I have... I think the appointments I've made have... In a couple of cases, people have not been able to serve. One resigned, another was asked not to be continued. And I'm... Be honest with you, I'm kind of not sure that the mayor's the right person to go out and figure out exactly who ought to be serving on that board. And he was the application that we had. And I got their advice. And I feel strongly for two perspectives about Mr. Ennis. And I'm very clear on my appointment.
I feel that he would be a good candidate, too. But I do know that we have five applications. But if the criteria is that you wanted a male... Expert, then only male on the list.
I will say this council was very affirming in our retreat about my absolute commitment to trying to provide as much diversity as we can on these boards.
Isn't he on that Main Street board as well?
No.
He just did that presentation, though?
He was... He was asked by Mr. Smith's gone. But Mr. Smith's, I understand, asked him to do that. Doc?
In his application, you know, I strongly support him also for that position. But it says that he's on the Planning and Zoning Commission in his application. So, I mean, that... I knew that from the beginning. And he does serve on a committee of Main Street. He's not on the board. But I was going to say that he's an excellent applicant. We've got a motion in a second. I'd like to call for the question.
Excuse me.
Willie?
There is an ordinance that provides for this and says that no member shall serve on more than one board.
When do we... Are you sure?
I'm reading from the ordinance.
So...
I know we've gone back and forth on that over the years. But assuming that the code of ordinance on my desk is correct, it's in section...
When do we... Do they say when we passed it?
Yes, sir. It says that it was passed and adopted 10/9/2012.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to argue with you about that.
Well, you know, we could research it and make sure that this is the most current version.
I think we need to because we have been back and forth on this.
We have.
And I'm... The previous company that we had doing our codifications, that's why we changed companies.
That's the only reason I'm being a little...
And so, I would like to at least have an opportunity to go back and pull those ordinances, especially the one it's referenced.
If you don't mind, I'm sorry, mayor. But this is what this says. But I'm not absolutely confident because the council has gone back and forth on this over the years. And...
I will withdraw this appointment. And we'll have to... We've got some other people we may have to look at. I would just say, my memory is very, very clear that we did not... We decided not to do it, that we had a... And maybe we changed it back at one point. I will withdraw this, uh, appointment, and, uh, we'll have to, uh, we've got some other people we may have to, uh, to look at, uh, I would just say my memory is very, very clear that we did not, we decided not to do it, that we had a, and maybe we changed it back at one point, but again, rules are rules, and we'll take whatever it is, and, uh, we'll, uh, let Mike, uh, give us some advice at the next meeting.
We certainly had some codification problems, and if you'll let us track that down, we'll bring you a definitive answer.
Item D two.
So, we need to, um-
I'm just withdrawing the, the appointment.
Okay, so, well, we have a motion in a second, so what are we, how do we handle that then?
Uh, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna ask you all to withdraw your motions.
That's what you're doing now, and you're asking so that we can be clear then, that?
Yeah, is that, if that's what we need to do, we need to get this off the table, because we're getting some advice that we're about to make a mistake here.
Okay, uh, did I second?
Is there, uh, uh, you know, this agreement to take this off the table right now? I think there is, we'll do that, we'll do it that way.
Okay, if I second, I'll withdraw my second, I mean, I was trying to remember who did that, so we could do it properly here, but if I second it, I will remove my second, and that way, there won't be a motion.
Jesse, I think you might have looked at this, um, when we, when we appointed the guy that is on the Parks Board and the Construction Standards Board too.
Yes.
Um, so the, the mayor might be right, I don't know. But I think we did talk about it then, if that helps you research at all.
We will definitely research it, I just reached forward-
This is not my first rodeo on this one, but that's always so certain.
And it's not mine either, but I thought, well, I'll grab the book and make sure that I'm right, and then I grabbed this book, and it says something else, and so, now we're in a pickle.
And, but Mayor, I'm in the same, uh, thought of mine that you are, that we had changed this back, because you wanted, the, the council wanted the latitude to allow people to serve more on one more, on more than one board, and so my recollection is we changed it, but, uh, that's why we changed companies, uh, because we were having problems with the previous firm and the codification of ordinances.
And, and I was expecting the book to say something different, to be honest with you, but I was trying to get the support to put it to bed, and this is what it said.
There's just too much confusion to make any decisions.
No.
Item D two, consideration discussion and possible action on the adoption of a resolution establishing the City Bastro- I think that might be agreement to provide full-time employment to the firefighters that are granted, or that are grant-funded, there'd be a dash there, grant-funded by the assistance to the firefighter's grant program at the conclusion of the grant period. And, uh, need Chief Adcock to come up, the Public Safety Director, and try to, you're here, and tell us what all this means.
Thank you, uh, what this is, we want to put in for a grant, uh, to get firefighters, pay firefighters, if we're awarded this grant, it will pay a hundred percent, we're actually putting in for three, doesn't mean we'll get three, doesn't mean we would have to accept all three, but what this is, is in order to put in for the grant, the council has to agree that when the grant period is over with, that we will retain their, their, uh, status full-time. The grant's good for two years, it pays a hundred percent of salary, benefits, insurance, the whole nine yards, it does not, um, give them, uh, it does not pay for their gear and stuff like that, but obviously, we already have pretty much all of that. So, I'm asking y'all to, um, what y'all want to do as far as, do we want to move forward with this grant process or not?
And I, I will say that I've used this program historically throughout the years, especially in the area of, of police officers, that help us to get the initial cost taken care of, and then we can plan budgetarily, um, and so, I, and as the chief said, there's no guarantee that we're going to get the grant if, if applying for it, but, um, it is a, it is a very useful program that a lot of cities use, and starting to, uh, transition into paid positions, and it's really mostly just the police and the fire that you see this grant.
Willie? Then Doc?
You don't have a part with applying for the grant for three firefighters, that's not the issue here, we're talking about a budget item that, that we need to discuss and be sure where we're going for, and after this grant, what's the period, after two or three years, we, you have, and then we have to keep them on full-time.
Correct.
And what's, what's astounding to me is that nobody, whether it was you or the manager, put anything on a report other than the cover sheet, that what we'd have to pay two years, three years down the road for each fireman, what it costs for salary, benefits, for one person, and we were asked to approve this tonight, and out of, to me, this is a budget item that we need to decide, or the manager needs to come back to us and how, how are we going to pay for this? And, uh, you know, and he, and he's right, because every deal, every deal we went through on the police department, we were hiring school people to go down there and work, and when the grant period was over, guess what, we never got rid of them, they're, they stayed on the force, so, that, that's, that's the deal with these, I don't, I don't like those kind of grants, and, because we, probably don't, that's just the way, I, I just don't like them, and, and to, to come up here and not have a, a prepared cost sheet for what those employees will cost us down the road, which is strictly a budget item, that's what we ought to be looking at, is a budget item. You know, here we are talking about maybe wanting to do something with the slab downtown, here we are talking about how we're going to address legal fees at the end, because it's a budget item, and here we are at the same place tonight with the, I love the grant, I love to have them for three years, but I, I don't like having to have a, a gun pointed at me and say, well, the only reason, only way we're going to give you money if you approve funding for them in three years, because that, that's unfair, because we, we have nothing to look at, we have nothing to go on. And it's probably going to get approved tonight, but it, it shouldn't, because of the fact, now, if, if you need to know tonight, I'm, I'm going to go against it, but I'd like for y'all, you and the manager, to come back at the next meeting, if it's not absolutely necessary tonight, and provide some kind of information to us of what this, this council has, or the manager is, is going to have to look at in, in three years to budget for those three firefighters in the general fund.
Point well taken, and ask it just to be pulled from the agenda.
Thank you.
Uh, Doc, it's off the agenda, but you wanted to speak, so you want to say anything, or is it moved to this point?
Well, I was, I'm going to speak in favor of it, because of, um, I know we've done this with our police officers in the past, and it's been, I think, very successful, I had some questions, but I think it's an excellent, uh, opportunity for us to get firefighters on board, um, in three years, who knows what the salaries and the benefits and things will be, so, we can have only a figure of what it would cost today for the firefighters, and since this is happening in a while, I think we have an excellent opportunity during our budget process to work that out, and to start planning, since it's, would be three years out, there would be three years to plan for the fire, for the firefighters, so, I, I think we have plenty of time to do that, and I'd like to support the idea of going forward with this, uh, but my question was, when will we find out about the grant?
Let me say, Doc, I, we pulled this item off the agenda, the city manager has, I had named you before he did that, that's why I let you speak, but we're going to move on now.
Wait a second, can't he put it back out there?
No?
We can, we can.
I had called on Doc, I had called on Doc to speak, I had named that he could speak, and then the city manager pulled it off the agenda, I wanted to give Doc the benefit of responding to my calling on him to speak, and that's all I'm going to do, so we're going to move it to item D three.
Mayor, but we can ask for reconsideration, am I not correct?
I mean, I don't know, if, if the city manager doesn't, I guess you can, at this point, you can tell the city manager that you're going to talk about it anyway, so let's, let's talk about that.
I will say this to the council, what the Mayor Protim has asked for should have been included in the packet, I apologize, I had to go to a board meeting on Friday, and that information should be in the packet, and I do not feel comfortable with this going forward without the council knowing what they're going to get into in the future.
In that case, I will concur then.
But I would also like to ask the city manager to bring it back as soon as that information is available, please.
Will do.
Thank you, Mike, item D three is consideration discussion and possible action approving the first reading of an ordinance, amending section one point one five oh three five Ethics Ordinance, in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bastrop, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date, Mr. Talbot?
Yes, this is item D three, beginning on page sixty-eight of the packet tonight, um, this was an item that was requested to be placed on the agenda for this evening, um, this is a recommendation, uh, from the, um, Ethics Commission, um, and the highlighted areas in blue reflect, um, the various changes that the Ethics Commission, um, has requested, um, unfortunately, this did not get to the council, um, I think there was a lapse in transition, uh, but it is before you tonight, as requested at the last council meeting.
Councilmembers?
And it has come forth with the, uh, with a recommendation by the Ethics Commission, that the changes be approved by the council, as noted in your-
Gary, I move that we approve.
I second.
Gary moved, and?
Uh, Kay seconded.
Uh, well, I wondered what Gary meant.
Uh, I, I meant that we should move this to the, we should approve it, uh, for inclusion in the consent agenda at the next meeting.
On second reading.
On second reading.
And that was your understanding, Kay?
Yes.
Uh, Kelly, I'm sorry, uh, anybody want to speak?
Okay, the motion is to approve on first reading, and the second reading of this ordinance to be placed on the consent agenda for second reading.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnally?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Thank you all, and, um, thanks for, I forgot who reminded us of that, but thanks for getting it up back up to us, uh, consideration, item D four is consideration discussion and possible action regarding potential charter amendments to the City Bastro, City Charter. We, uh, talked about this at the last, at our workshop last, and we had a, a couple of, uh, recommendations, and, uh, Mike, do you have anything in addition to those two, or a call on those two individuals?
No, I mean, this was, as a carol from last Tuesday night, special meeting where you asked to decide to be placed on tonight's agenda.
So, I know Willie, you had a, um, you had an item, um, see, see if you want to make a motion that we do that.
It wasn't, it wasn't just one item, it was concerning two utilities, one was water and one was electric.
If we can, if we need to separate them, just go with one?
Well, I mean, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and tell you how to put the wording on a, on a ballot, but, you know, my deal is, is that I'm not worried about this council here, or maybe next year's council, or next year's council, but, you know, it's very possible in three or four years, you may elect a council, and three people can come forward, depose of the resolution that's in place, and decide by three votes of a council, that they might want to sell our water utility or electric utility, but by having it in a charter, and, and amendment, and voted by our citizens, and I believe it'll pass, that, that, that assures everything, that, that everything has to go through a vote of the council.
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate for you-
Vote of the people, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate for you to make a motion to instruct the city manager to work with the city secretary and the city attorney to prepare the kind of language, uh, that would accomplish what you want, uh, to bring it back to us for approval, to place on the, uh, ballot in November.
You know, I, I understand there's probably some people that probably don't want it on the November ballot, and I, and, you know, that's, that's their choice, I don't mind waiting till May, next May, to put it on the, in conjunction with a, a council election, uh, I, I don't see why anybody that's running for any office would object to a charter amendment being on a, uh, being on a ballot next to when they vote on the election, but, uh, my deal is, we're having a bond election, I believe, in November, and it had these two things that I've asked, and maybe something else along the way, uh, it makes sense, because as, as soon as I guarantee you, we have a bond election in November, it'll be years probably before we come back and ask for another bond election, and then have to go out and, and have a special election and waste money to do a few charter amendments, that sounds really smart, but, you know, I, I, like I said, I, I can either do November, or, or the May election, it doesn't bother me either way.
Well, we won't do it if you don't make a motion. Or somebody. No, I'm saying, if, we need to deal with these one at a time, because they're going to be separate issues, and then you're saying these might be two issues, so I'm saying, if you want to move it forward, make a motion, see if there's a second, and then we'll talk about it.
Okay, I'd just make a motion to authorize the city manager and, and legal counsel to draft up, uh, the wording on a potential charter vote on, on, uh, water utility and electric utility, going to the, going to the citizens for a vote if anybody chose to sell our utilities.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, but I have some comments as well.
Sure, well, that's, it's time to discuss it, then you can go first.
Okay, I'm, I'm in agreement with what, um, Willie has to say, I think it's a, it's a good idea to try to protect the utilities and the water, um, but I'm not sure that, uh, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure we want to do a charter amendment without a charter review, and I think it's time, isn't it, or is it next year that it's time for one?
Well, have y'all seen?
When is the formal, formal charter review required?
Well, the last one was, um, we were over at the old city hall, I know that.
Two thousand ten, I think, or nine, it might have been, probably two thousand, it was two thousand nine or early two thousand ten, is Debbie still here? Do you remember? Is that about right? Willie was on that too, uh, I know, I think it was my first year on the council, so it was two thousand nine or two thousand ten.
Well, I, I, can I just jump, jump in and comment, I, I'm just, I'm just walking off, uh, a discussion I thought we had at the back table, and I think-
We did?
The council members, uh, weighed in on what they thought some other amendments may be, and I think Kelly weighed in with one issue, and I thought the city manager was asked, is there, was there anything that he could think of that would be useful in the, uh, as far as in the election on charter, now, having said that, if you want to go through the motion of asking a committee to come forward to decide whether they want to sell a water utility or electric utility out of vote of a council, I think it's a little silly, but if, if we want to go through that process, I just recommend that we move it till May.
Well, I'm just saying that if we have to do one anyways, which I believe it's required, we do a charter review every so many years, and I think it's time, um, or next year, if we have to do one anyways, why don't we just do it all at once?
There's, there's no requirement.
Right.
There's no requirement?
What the charter requires is in section thirteen point oh nine, and what it says is that every six years, the council will consider whether a review is necessary, it doesn't say that you have to do one, or you don't have to do one, it just says that every six years, you think about it, so that if there are problems, it just gives you an opportunity-
Is it traditionally handled with the committee when we think about it, because I wasn't here for that one?
Well, we've only had one opportunity, and it, it traditions one time, yeah, it was traditional.
Okay.
Uh, I would say, Kelly, it would be logical, if you, if you feel strongly to propose something like that, you might try to talk Willie into withdrawing his motion, so you can move that we set up a commission.
Do we have to decide this tonight?
Well, I mean, we have, when's the deadline for getting the stuff out of the ballot?
Ballots will have to be incorporated into the ordinance for the first council meeting in August.
In August, so we, we have a, a little leeway to figure it out?
Yes, I mean, but you're going to, as I, as I've said previously, that when you, you've got until the first council meeting, it will actually be the second reading, because your ballot has got to be incorporated into the context of your ordinance, so any changes that you'd be proposing would, would have to be done by, by the first meeting in, in August, and, and so we're right up against the first of May, if you think you can create a committee, and get the committee down here, and, and then prepare the ordinance, um, you know, it's, it's a pretty condensed timeframe.
Yeah, you'd need public, you know, public hearings and that kind of-
If there's no requirement to have a charter review committee, I, I must have misunderstood that there was a requirement for one, which is why I was trying to piggyback them all together, if there's not, then, let's just consider-
Yeah, Mike, the requirement is Mike tells us what he thinks, and he said he didn't think of it, so you're okay on that?
Okay.
Okay, uh, so, other discussion on Willie's motion, Gary, I mean, I'm, Doc, I'm going to go with you, I'm sorry, and then, and then Gary.
No, I was just, uh, I mean, although I think it's a good idea to have the, um, charter review, I questioned the timing in May, and I would think that we would want to wait some more time, because, uh, there is a requirement that after we have it, we have to wait a certain period of time, so, so it's two years, so we need to consider that also, in case other things come up, we would be, we'd have to wait for two more years before we could do anything else, but, um, it's a very prudent, uh, request that you're making, I just would think that if we're going to do it, we should wait until May.
Gary?
And as well, I agree with, uh, with Willie on the, the need to add that to our charter, I think it's, it's a good, a good suggestion, but at the same time, I agree with Kelly that if we're going to make some changes, we really ought to look at our charter and see if there's anything else in the charter that wants to get changed, because we're stuck for two years, and I think it's, you know, I don't know that the, if you think about the, the future of this council right now, I mean, we have the potential for two different members, but three of us aren't changing for sure at this, uh, at this upcoming election, so I don't really see the attitude that I'm hearing going to be changing in the next year, and I think that Willie's suggestion that maybe we bump this, uh, to the May oral, or the, uh, city council, uh, election next May, would, would make more sense than trying to rush this thing through, and just jump at something by November, and then regret it, that gee, we made one or two changes, but we should have picked up this, and this, and this, and this, so, I just, I think we might want to think hard before we jump.
Kay, you want to weigh in on anything?
I agree.
Great, well, tell us what you agree with, there's been several things said. Well, okay, uh, Kelly?
So, if we did wait till May, would you, would you want to have a formal charter committee look at it, or do you think we should just go one-off?
Well, I, I think that makes a lot of sense, I guess the other thing that, that I would, uh, ask the city manager, you know, we aren't necessarily experts in city charters, I don't know, are there experts out there in city charters that could take and say, here's what your charter says on this subject, a typical city of your size really addresses the issue this way or that way, is, is there any kind of counseling, consultant that might look at things, see things that we wouldn't see?
I believe when the, when you, uh, thought it to go to a home rule city, and the first charter that you approved, I think the, the council at that time did hire a consultant to work with the council in transitioning from a general law city to a home rule city.
Well, and, and, because I think that, uh, I think an expert would be better than a, the committee that we might put together probably doesn't have the legal understanding necessary to, to address the various issues in the charter, I mean, at the same time though, we as, as council people should be looking at it, and should be putting our brains into this thing, and saying, are there things that, that we don't agree to, that we think should be changed, but I, I suggest that we might want to bring in a consultant on this.
Well, I, I would like to point out to the council that keep in mind what home rule means, home rule means the, the community, how, how this community wants to be governed and operate, and the first decision that was made, that we go to a council manager, form of government. Secondly, I, I've worked in four different home rule cities, and the charters were different in every one of them, because there were just specialties in each one of those communities that drove some changes, I don't- I don't think you're gonna get every, you're gonna find a word-for-word model for a city charter.
You know, I'm not really suggesting that it is that way. I'm just saying that there may be some restrictive things in our charter that are just onerous, we don't, we just don't recognize it, that are onerous to our abilities to govern the city, that maybe, or you know, that give us the abilities to do things that maybe we shouldn't be doing, as Willie suggested on the water. And there may be things that might be the other way around, and I think somebody that looks at this on a day-to-day basis might identify things that we just wouldn't see.
Well, and the going forward, Doc, I see you, and I'll call on Willie. Going forward, the question is also, as we look forward to being a town close to twice as big as the town that passed the charter in the first place, are there things we ought to consider that bigger cities are doing? And I think that would be a kind of review that I would hope we would undertake. Doc?
I think the whole reason we have the charter was that, you know, we're protected by the state with the statutes and the things that we can't do pretty much so. But this is to localize it so that it will be things that our citizens feel would be important in governing our city and watching the development and growth. So I mean, I think the community group or the task force is a vital part that we should have. I mean, we could get a consultant in here, but I think, you know, the whole reason for charter is local control and local advice, and it's very important, I think, that we have that element involved.
Willie.
I was just gonna mention again, I misspoke or misunderstood Mike's comment, I guess, that night, because I thought the question that was asked of the manager, have you looked at anything or has anything caught your eye as far as maybe wanting to add to charter? And I thought he said, not at this time.
I did say that.
That's what he said, yeah.
Yeah, that's what he said.
So I mean, that's, and that's why I said, I just, man, I hate to do this to you, but I'm gonna do it. You know, before we passed those resolutions, one of them was about, well, we can't do nothing with electric utility because Ken watched the boob on it. And then the water deal came along because Joe Beal's gonna sell water to somebody. So we did a resolution. But now, like I said, in two or three years, somebody could just drop that, three people could drop a resolution, I mean, do the resolution and sell those utilities. And for us to carry on the conversation, it's just as simple as it is, to put those on a charter vote along with our bond election.
I mean, I'll just weigh in, I think we ought to pass this. I think we ought to pass your motion tonight. I absolutely agree. I think there's nothing I've seen this council agree on more strongly than the citizens are gonna have to weigh in on. I don't think there's any chance, frankly, I wouldn't bet a nickel that any council would ever vote to do that. But I think that this council has an opportunity, having had some serious conversations over the past couple of years, to get it in the charter. And I think now's the moment to give it a try. Kelly?
I completely agree with Willie on that because we do not want to send the message that we're wishy-washy on whether or not we want to sell the water at some point. And if we propose this and then we withdraw it or put it off, we might be sending a message that says, you know, we might not want to pass this. So I am, I'm with Willie on wanting to do something about this fairly quickly. I don't know that I want to vote on it tonight, though. I think I want to think about it just a little bit more. Can we put it on for the next meeting?
Uh, well-
Just to make sure before we start.
I think the way to do that is to make a motion to postpone this item that's now moved and seconded until our next meeting or as time certain, and see if that passes. If it doesn't, we're gonna vote on this. So-
We already have one motion, do we have to vote on that first?
Say, no, somebody can make a motion that we-
Or you can withdraw the second on the motion, it's on the floor, and then that will end it.
I would just like to make one comment. If we're leaning towards hiring a consultant to be consistent with other items that have come before us tonight, I think that's an item that should be considered at budget time.
So you're talking probably that you're anyone-
If it's a desire of the council to want to hire a consultant, consistent with what you stated on other things with budgetary expenditures, then I think it ought to be considered as part of the new budget. And then you'll decide with your priorities whether or not it's warranted funding or not.
So-
I mean, I'm just trying to be consistent.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. Kelly, did you hear Doc's comment?
No, Doc, did you make another comment?
Doc, could you repeat your comment?
I was just saying whoever made the motion, if we don't want to do it tonight, could withdraw their second, therefore, and if no one else made a second, we wouldn't have a motion, we could move forward.
Okay, so I was the secondur, so I could withdraw it, but I would like to withdraw it and make a new motion that we discuss this again at the next meeting.
So-
Because I want to give it some more thought to make sure that there's no other changes I'm gonna make.
I'm gonna let you withdraw the second. Willie has made a motion, is there a second? Okay, let me suggest.
I'm not gonna put it, if it comes back, it's gonna come back to the manager. It's gonna come back to the manager. I'm not gonna put it on the agenda, ask for it again, because this is as simple as it gets, and this is the reason that our council is criticized throughout the community in not being able to make a decision when it needs to make a decision. And, and, I mean-
Yeah, I understand that, but it-
I mean, people are seeing it tonight live. I mean, they're seeing it, they're seeing it right now and seeing it's something as simple as this, four people can't agree to do what's best in the best interest of the citizens, for whatever reason. I could name a couple, but I'm not. But I'm not gonna bring it back, the manager will bring it back, and y'all deal with it because I've offered something sensible and logical to this council for the future of our citizens, whether it's the water supply or the elections department.
I'm sensitive to your concerns.
I hope it's on record with the secretary.
I will second the motion, okay? I have another discussion to add after that.
I have a second to Willie's motion.
I just got one. I just seconded it. Can I discuss?
Sure.
All right, I'm seconding the motion because I think, I think what Willie's suggesting is absolutely something that we need to do. Do we need to do it now? Do we need to do it later? Obviously, that's up for discussion. But we have until August 1st to determine if there are other, if there are other charter issues that we want to address. And, you know, if we determine that by August 1st we don't have our act together, we can take other actions. So I'd say on that basis, I'm willing to vote yes for this.
All right, Kelly?
Well, since I support Willie's motions, I'll vote yes as well, and I guess we have some time to figure it out. I just, what I'm trying to avoid is, is if there is something else that we need to do that we're not tying our own hands for the next two years, that's just all I'm trying to avoid. So I'm hesitant to rush into it, but that doesn't mean I don't support what you said. I completely do.
Point well taken.
Doc? I mean, I agree with the motion too. I mean, it's not that I don't want this to happen, I just also do not want to tie our hands. But if that is the will of the council, I will go along with it because, I mean, it's something we need to do. I'm just questioning the timing.
So is the motion to have Mike and JC come back with some wording and then we can vote on it again? Is that what it is? So we're just voting on some potential wording for what Willie suggested?
You're gonna have to pass the specific wording. It has to be absolutely rock-solid correct to go on the ballot. So you're gonna have to vote on that. But we're not, I don't think this council is qualified to get the exact wording right and to make sure that everything's correct with Secretary of State and others. So yes, the motion is to instruct them to come back with the proper language that will work so y'all can vote on it. Now, doesn't mean you have to vote on it, doesn't mean you won't want to change the wording or whatever. But we've got, this is the process we have to go through to get something on the ballot. And I will say that, no, I will also, no, I will say, I will hopefully remember to say this later in a more general fashion. So any other comments or whatever on, or questions for Mike on Willie's motion?
The statement was made, there still is time between now and August. I wouldn't wait till the last week in July, but I would encourage the council, between now and next council meeting, to review the charter and see if there's any concerns that you may have so that we can address them.
And this is what I was gonna reserve to say till later, and that is, it doesn't mean that we can't have a hearing in here and invite people to come down, tell us what they think, and let people, I mean, Mike and Doc spoke pretty eloquently about the fact that it's organic and it's the community, and what does the community want? And what better way to do that? And maybe we don't need a minute look at the thing, we just need people to be common sense on it and let us know what they think and let y'all decide.
I agree with Mike on coming.
If he would look as well in the charter as we do ourselves.
I need, Debbie?
I have to.
Because we're gonna, Kelly has another item, I didn't know what you wanted to speak on, or you can speak in general later.
I wish to talk about the project that the city manager, what the charter review commission took six months, or nine months ago, happened.
Yeah, Debbie's reminding the mayor, and the mayor pro tem that this thing took a while. If we're doing a formal charter review commission, but, or committee, whatever it would be called, doesn't mean we can't review it some other way, though. So I think y'all are ready to vote. I think you understand the motion. This is regarding, Mike, why don't you just restate what you understand?
The motion that was made and seconded, that the city attorney and the city manager draft, make a draft of language that would go into a charter amendment regarding the citizens' vote will be required to sell either the water or electric utilities.
Okay. And I think we're all clear, and we understand this will come back to us. Will you please call the robe?
Mayor Protem Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGillalan?
Yes.
Councilmember McNally?
Yes.
Okay, Kelly, you had an item, and I'll turn to you now.
Yeah, I wanted to suggest if we are gonna amend the charter, that we add language in there that prohibits anybody that's elected to the city council or the position of mayor from being a voting member on another city board, just to avoid double representation. The city boards all report to the council ultimately, and sometimes it feels as if the business of the city is being done outside of this dais where it should be. And I just thought it would make it more clear if they are welcome to serve, as many of them as are willing to do so, but as ex officio only. So that would be my motion.
Sure, a second.
Second.
So let me weigh in. I think that, I may be mistaken, but I think the issue here that has risen in the community and maybe on the council has to do with EDC.
It could also be for the new boards that we create, like the DMO. We don't know the structure of that yet, and we could end up with some council representatives there.
We have, everybody on this council except for Kelly serves on a board, and they're all voting memberships.
No.
Kelly is a member of the Vision Task Force.
Yeah.
You're not a member, you're not a voting member of VAI PPE, you're a voting member of the Vision Task Force.
I'm not a voting member.
When the new bylaws passed, you-
They're becoming to the council shortly.
So you have, I know, and you know, Doc is on the PID board, and we have by our own ordinances, a requirement that there be a city council member on the PID board. We have a requirement by our bylaws of the EDC that the citizens elect a member of the EDC by electing the mayor. We have legislative and bylaw authorization to have as many as three council members on the EDC board. I think if the issue is, first of all, I don't think it makes any sense to put somebody on a board and not let them vote. I think the issue that you ought to be raising is not letting them be on the board, because I think that's the issue. And if, I mean, that's a different issue, but if you ask Doc to serve on our, whoever's gonna do it next year, serve on the PID board, and say, you gotta go down there and you can't, you can't vote, well, why could we put them on there in the first place?
I think that's a different issue because that's by some rule that we have on that particular board, because it's that particular board.
Well, we, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Didn't you say it's a rule that we have, that we have a voting council member on the PID board?
We passed an ordinance putting a city council member on the PID board.
It's for-
The bylaws of the EDC puts the mayor on the EDC board.
I wouldn't really have a problem with you, the mayor, voting on the EDC.
Well, but, but-
Because you don't normally vote here, so it's not double voting. I have a problem with double voting, is what I have.
But I would, then I think the issue is not letting those people serve in a position where they could vote, but to say that we expect them to serve. And, I mean, I could support taking a city council member off the PID board. It made sense when we passed it. I think I proposed it, and I was the first member on there. But, you know, I think they could have survived without me, but it was a point in time where I thought was really, I think we all agreed, it was really important we have a city council member on there. And it seemed like the right thing to do. But I would not have wanted to serve on that board and not been able to make motions and to vote and to participate fully on that board. That would have been insulting to me, frankly. That's just me. Maybe I'm, you know, my ego's too big or something. But, you know, I think that, I think the twist on this is the wrong way. I think if there's a desire on the part of this council to prohibit that, we ought to prohibit them from being on there, not prohibit them from voting. Willie and then Kay.
If I remember what I was gonna say now. Got lost. You know, I don't mind continuing the discussion, but I think it's wrong to make a decision tonight, especially without hearing the chairman of the BDC weigh in on his, have some comments, and the city manager. Because the deal is, you know, I don't ever get comments about, well, there's too many council members serving on the BDC, there's too many voting one night at the council meeting in one. What I get comments from is from citizens that appreciate the partnership between the BDC and the city council, and BDC funding a lot of projects that otherwise our taxes and our citizens would have to pay higher tax rates, and they appreciate BDC doing those projects. And if you eliminate that, you bring in three or four new people that don't understand the budget or don't understand taxes one, they're gonna be in trouble.
So you're saying that you have to be on council to be able to pass things that jointly affect the city and the BDC, good projects? You must be a council member to make that happen?
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. And I don't think we'd be having discussion, if you were on the BDC board, this wouldn't be up for discussion tonight. I don't, no, it wouldn't. Willie, no, it wouldn't be up for discussion.
It sure would, don't say what I would do, but it sure would be up for discussion.
That's my opinion.
Let's keep the personalities out of place.
Well, I mean, I think that's what the whole deal is.
I want to be on the BDC board, and I don't want too many council members on the BDC board. That's what the whole deal is.
All of you want on it, that's what the issue is.
I want on it. I don't want all of you on it either.
She misses the-
We're gonna take a five-minute recess until we get the council calm down.
Time for a break, a breathing break.
We have an order next, councilmember Schiff, McGillalan, and Delarosa. So Gary, your honor.
I'd just like to make the comment, as you know, as far as the voting rights of council people on boards and commissions, is that, first of all, I think if you're gonna be on a board, you should be able to vote. But I think more importantly, this council approves every board and council position. If you don't want somebody on that board, then you shouldn't put them on the board. I mean, you're not required, the only one required, you got the mayor who's required to be on the BDC board, and I guess there's a requirement that there be one council person, I've heard, on the PID board. But other than that, you don't have to approve anybody on any board if you don't want them on there.
Well, if you're all on that board, you called me next.
Yeah, sorry, you're next, yeah.
Okay, if you're already on that board, and there's three of you, then you could vote yourselves in. I mean, to me, it's, okay, let's look at an example. vote yourselves in, I mean, to me, it's, okay, let's look at an example, because what Willie said he's hearing in the community is the complete opposite of what I'm hearing in the community. I'm hearing, it's like a mini city council meeting, that city business is being discussed over there, that things are being decided before they come here, that people like me, who are not on that board, hear about when I get up here. Case in point was the why, I know that we were on a short timeframe, and so things were moving very quickly, but I watched the videos of those meetings, and there were a lot of discussions about, well, the city could chip in this, and the BDC could do that, the city would do this, and the council members were all over that, talking about what the city could do versus what the BDC could do, when that discussion needed to happen here. Now, I realize that that was a particular circumstance because it was a short-term, short-term project, but it undoubtedly happens on other projects as well, and it's not just the BDC, we are fixing to create this board for the DMO, we don't know who's gonna be on it, we're gonna want some say in what happens with our, with our DMO money, who's, there's a lot of people going around town saying, let's structure it just like the BDC, where I believe it's by, is it the law that we can have four members, four council members on the BDC?
Right.
State law says four, our particular bylaws says three.
Okay, well, that's a lot, and we could have, we could have the same if we structured it like the BDC has, as has been suggested, we could have the same problem with the DMO board. It's just that we, when we were a small town and we didn't have anybody to serve on boards, I could see this, but we have lots of people who keep signing up to serve on boards, and I don't believe that somebody has to have the inside knowledge of the city budget to be able to serve effectively on the BDC board. I think they could still vote and, you know, make good decisions and bring their, bring their things to the council, and then we consider it separately so that you also have two sets of eyes looking at something, too. If you guys already think it's a great project at EDC, then you've come to the council thinking it's a great project, and then the minority over here has to either get on board or be the lone ranger that says no. It's, it's too much, it's too much, there's no need for it, I don't see the need for it, so that's my argument.
Willie?
Well, just carry on that extra comment, while there are three members from the council serving on the BDC, there's four non-council members, so that's one issue. I personally think tonight is not the night, I'd like to see the city manager and the BDC president stand before us and talk about, and even the BDC director, to see what, give their opinion on what they think, participation from members being on the council, whatever it's, two, three, or four, it's not gonna be four, but from three on down. Besides, on the DMO, I mean, what they're talking about is a separate entity, they're not saying set it up with council members, I wouldn't probably vote for council members going on the DMO, so.
But we don't know that yet, because we don't know what the structure is, and it has, even the mayor has said, it could be like the BDC, in what way? Like, a lot of council representation? We don't know that yet.
I went through, mayor, I can't, I can't speak to what, what the mayor was trying to say, but the people in the community that are for a separate entity, they're saying like, a separate entity like BDC, but it doesn't say it has, has the same makeup of two, three, or four council members, which I, which I would disagree to, because of what we're going through tonight, but, mayor, I think it's inappropriate to speak about this without the chairman of the BDC having some comment, and the city manager as well.
Kelly?
So, out of curiosity, why do you think it's inappropriate for three or four council members to be on the DMO board, but it is appropriate for them to be on the EDC board? What's the difference?
Well, you've worked down there before, it's no different than when you were working at the BDC. She worked down at the BDC, we had, back then, I think we had four council members.
No, but you said that you wouldn't approve a DMO board that had four council members, or three council members on it, but you, you still think it's a good idea on the EDC, I just wanna know what the difference is.
I wasn't wanting to go through what we're going through tonight.
Mr. Mayor, the truth, that's what you're, I'm gonna answer.
It's nothing against you, it's just, it's too, too much of one voice, too much of one voice.
I disagree.
I'm gonna call on Mike, and then got a couple of citizens.
It's just my recommendation, there's quite, it's quite evident that this is an issue that would like to be discussed amongst the council, we have other city business that we do need to attend to tonight, I would recommend that the council have a special workshop to have this matter discussed so that we can proceed with the city business.
I'd like to recommend that Willie's idea of having the BDC director and Mike come up and do it rather than a workshop, I'd like to hear their opinions.
Well, I met the chairman of the BDC as well, I'm sure he would've been, if he was asked, if this, if he knew this was gonna be brought up, probably he would've showed up tonight if he was asked.
Let me, y'all have heard what Mike said, we can, we still got this motion on the floor, I wanna give, and, you know, we got two and a half hours till midnight. Mr. Goldsmith?
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
And there's a possible storm coming in, so, you know.
Here it comes.
Let's not talk about something that we don't wanna talk about, 'cause it might be getting late.
Three minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, come on, give me a break. Here's the bottom line, BDC right now has an ad hoc committee looking at the bylaws. The bylaws in themselves could decide how many council members are on there and what the voting position is. They're doing their work, they're looking at this, and there'll be a presentation, from what I understand, soon, I trust them. I trust the ad hoc committee to bring forth something, then we'll have a public hearing, and then it can be decided. Number two, we were all forewarned that if we started talking about amending the charter, that this could happen, that once it becomes more involved, you need a charter review, and what's happened tonight demonstrates there should be a charter review, a transparent charter review that looks at all the issues and moves forward. No one's gonna steal the water, no one's gonna, no one's trying to cause any harm, we sure could take a breather and do a charter review properly, instead of getting into these arguments that we have now. And that's, as I said, J.C. warned us that this could happen, and it did happen, and that's the end.
Thank you. Richard Smarzick?
Counsel, Mayor, Richard Smarzick. This seems to be related to whether a citizen can serve on more than one board. A little bit reviewed, appears that it's allowed by statute, a council person could be appointed to more than one board, but if the citizen's free, can't serve them more than one, depending on what J.C. finds, why wouldn't that apply to the council?
Well, just a clarification, I did go look at the new codification book, and that prohibition is not in the ordinance, so I thought it was taken out, and it's not in our new ordinance book.
Okay. Thank you. Let me say, let me weigh in a little bit on what Mike said, and it's, I guess it's, it's germane to the, to the motion, but it's also a general comment. If we were to do a workshop, I wouldn't wanna call an entire workshop meeting on just this one narrow issue, but if the council is inclined to hold some kind of a public meeting, a hearing, a discussion, a forum, where people can come weigh in on anything they see on the, on the charter, I think that it accomplishes, I've said it before, I'll say it again, I think it accomplishes the spirit of what Doc and Mike talked about earlier, about weighing what kinda community we wanna be. There's plenty of time for somebody to go research a town of 20,000, see what their charter looks like, and see if we pick up something. We got people on this council that are brilliant researchers, or one of us is, anyway, I'm looking down at you, and, so I think that would be a reason to do what Mike's suggesting. As I said, I don't think I'd be inclined to call that kind of a meeting without, I feel this is a one little issue, I might work it into a regular meeting or something like that, but I think if y'all are inclined to just engage the public more on other issues, that's what you wanna do, I think, you know, it might be a good, it might be a reasonable thing to do to postpone this discussion until after we do that, but, again, I'm not gonna do anything but work on this motion, because that's where we stand parliamentary, parliamentarily. So, we're working on Kay's, Kelly's motion to prohibit council members from voting on any board they may serve on. Any other, any more discussion? This is, this is a similar thing to ask for language from Mike and all that, correct?
It is, but I will, I like your idea of letting the public weigh in, maybe this is more important to me than it is to anybody else, I'd like to hear it. I'd like to, I also like to invite the BDC chairman and executive director to weigh in as well, and see what they have to say about it, so I will withdraw my motion for now, if you will agree to schedule something that we can talk about this further.
Well, why don't you withdraw, and I'll let you make it again if you don't like what happens, how's that? Because I, once you withdraw your motion, I'm gonna make my suggestion to the council about the workshop.
Okay, I withdraw.
All right, y'all, how do y'all feel about having a workshop where we talk about not just this issue, but any issue anybody wants to bring forward, something any of y'all think of, what the citizens may wanna come with, we'll give public notice to time, time to go take a good, careful look at it. Doc, I hate to tell you, I don't think you'll be around by the time we get there, but.
Well, I was gonna say, if it's a public meeting and it's after May 17th, I'll definitely still be there.
All right, so, does that seem like kind of a nod of the head around thing for what we ought to do? I'm, okay, I think Mike's come up with a good idea, and I'm gonna, I think we're all affirming that, we'll have, if you think of anybody else in particular that needs to be here, I will take the advice of the two EDC representatives and Mike, and make sure that they speak to us specifically, and then anybody else that wants to, we'll do what we always do.
Are you going to limit the comments to just the two motions?
No, no, I, no, no, I'm saying this would be, I would, I'd say it'd be anything. Now, we've only had two suggestions, and there's nothing on the table with this council except those two, unless somebody else has something tonight, but I think somebody can bring something up, and if a council member's persuaded that we ought to get it on the table, then they can bring it up at a, at a, at a meeting. Is that okay?
And also, by doing it that way, we may end up with a charter review committee.
Of sort of make, make, make do kinda, or it might be who shows up?
That's right.
Yeah, that's, that, that's good, Mike, thank you. Item B5, D5, sorry, is a consideration discussion of possible action on the first reading of a proposed ordinance, city bas drop, city council, city bas drop amending the budget for fiscal year 2016 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Ms. Walburn?
Good evening. In your packet, exhibit A, behind the agenda item, is a memorandum which outlines, I tried to be as specific as possible with each fund and what I was wanting to do with each amendment item, there's 10 funds I'm wanting to amend this evening, if you have any questions on any one of them, I'd be happy to address any.
These are absolutely necessary, correct?
Yes, and most of them are taking some of the, utilizing some of the fund balance available to actually put the budget in place so that we can spend it.
Gary?
I was just gonna comment that I thought you did a great job of spreading, you know, putting this together where you could see what's going in, where things are moving, and I, I was able to follow it.
Thank you.
Doc?
I was just gonna say the same thing, I think you outlined it, it's very simple, there are things that we need to do, and so, if everyone's in agreement, I'd like to move that we go ahead and accept this.
It's a first, it's a first reading on a proposed ordinance.
How about the second reading?
What did you say, what did you say, Doc?
I was gonna say, I was gonna move that we go ahead and accept this on the first reading, and suggest that we put it on the consent agenda for the second reading.
That's what I thought you were saying, and Gary, I think, seconded that.
I'd second that.
Discussion? Please call, sorry.
One quick question, I missed the part where it said the budget for the elevated storage tank on Highway 20 for a portion of it, how much was the portion?
It's in the, let's see.
It's in here somewhere?
Yes, on the water and wastewater fund, we're putting 2.3.
Got it, okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anne, would you please call the room?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnally?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Delarosa?
Thank you all. Item D6 is.
Yes, pursuant to the council's directive, we're discussing item D6 regarding capital improvements project currently under review by the council. At last Tuesday night's meeting, you asked that I do two things, one, put what's currently being considered on one sheet, and that was in your packet tonight, and secondly, that I put them on a city map, and here's the map, as I said I would hand out tonight. The first map is the projects that currently are under consideration, and how they are spread out through the city. The second map is, I think, equally important in the council's evaluation, and the second map is all the projects we've done since 2006, and you're gonna see that there's a large number of projects that have been undertaken by the city over the last 10 years, as illustrated by a very busy map here, but I felt that you needed to compare this with your current projects so that you can do a better evaluation, so I just wanted to explain what the two maps are about. Yes.
Thank you for adding the dates on here, Mike, I appreciate it.
We talked at our last meeting, or some meeting rather, that we would have, I think we said in May, some sort of a hearing, or maybe it would be June, so we make sure that we get the community to weigh in, but probably need to do it in May if we can, because we, you know, if it turns out that a group of citizens think this is a nice idea and wanna go organize themselves to try to get it passed, they might wanna start getting organized, but we also need to have plenty of opportunity to get input from the community, to see how they feel about this, so we're sort of right now taking a really good, hard look at where we've come, and with more detail than we asked for, so Gary?
Yeah, I'm, my comment would be that, you know, we have this list, all these various street projects, infrastructure projects, you know, from my standpoint at least, I don't really know the priorities, I don't know the dire needs, if you will, I think, you know, the Public Works and the Utilities Department would know more about the conditions, the existing conditions of the various streets and infrastructures that we're proposing to fix, you know, I'd like to hear from our departments to go through and say, these are the priorities that I think are most critical, that need to be done because this is failing, we don't have enough capacity for that, whatever, we have a list here, I don't, I really can't read from this what the priorities are, is that something, have we done?
I mean, the department directors have input on every one of those priorities.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm looking more for the, for the city, the city manager to lead a, if we were gonna do a $5 million bond, these are, I could fit these into a $5 million bond, get the biggest kinda bang for the buck as far as the key issues that we really need to address, and then say, if we were gonna go beyond that, let's say we were gonna approach 10 million, these are kinda, and there's, some of these are like economic issues, you know, if we put this road in, it will, it will make this commercial area more viable, it will increase the potential of the tax value, the ad valorem tax value of these properties, and the sales tax value of these various properties will go up tremendously, so they'll offset what we're spending on these bonds by bringing additional tax revenues into the city, but I'd really like the city to, the city departments to kinda boil this down to something we can swallow, because we've got just a huge, $35 million worth of projects that I personally, I can't prioritize, I don't know if anybody else on the council is having that issue, but I think our, our city could help us out a little.
Willie, could I weigh in? Mayor, I have a memory lapse there, I thought the last meeting was set up for the next meeting, and Mike was getting this. this on one sheet like he did and it's fine, but I thought that maybe he asked us to prioritize some of the things that we'd like to see.
Well, I think, I think that what we've, let me just talk about that for a second. I think there's, let me say what the processes I think we need to go through. I, I think that, no, I think that, that we have to prioritize at some point and what we ask for is some more information. And so, the question is, when do we make our priorities? How do we make them and when, what's all at stake? So, let me try to explain what I think makes sense and what I think we talked about. I'm sorry, I thought you had. Please turn your mic on, please.
What I was leading to was that as we prioritize, I mean, shouldn't our first priority be to, and Mr. Schiff just mentioned it was X amount of millions of dollars on, on this sheet of paper, but shouldn't the first, as we go and try to prioritize these projects, shouldn't we have an idea of what we, we feel that we're gonna go out and ask the citizens to approve?
Yeah, I think the two, I think they're two sided and you can start anywhere you want to, because what I was gonna propose is, let me run through it and see if it dovetails at all with what you're saying. I don't disagree at all with what you're saying. I think that's how we get there. I think that, I'm hoping that, that it's appropriate for me to mention something that's not on this list tonight.
Sure.
I think that we, and I'll maybe just say it right now, some kind of a recreation structure. And second is that we may hear from citizens something that we hadn't thought of. I, I think it will add up and, and Mike described this process to us several months ago. We may wind up with a whole lot of money that we're willing to, to try to, to have past bond issues for, so we do have to figure out a way to prioritize and so forth. I think that, that there is a, a, in my, in my mind, there's a list of priorities that we come up with. I think the idea of having the staff give their priorities to inform council is okay. Citizens do the same, we can have surveys, we can do wherever you want to, but at some point we make, we have to make a priority list. We also have to say, how far are we willing to go with dollars, just like you said? In my mind, there's a priority list and it starts adding up as it goes down and there's a cutoff number, $10 million or whatever, and it stops there, you do these, you don't do those. And that seems to be a pretty, pretty simple way to, to go about it. Or we just say, let's let the citizens draw the line, you know? So, there's a, but we've, that's gonna be an important thing for us to do fairly quickly, or, or, well, not that quickly, but it's, it's, it's the bottom line, it's the final decision we have to make. And so, let me just repeat that and see if, if it dovetails at all with what you're saying, Willie, and whether it seems to be the direction we ought to go. We have this information here that we, I've just added another item to it, I hope Mike will put on there, that sometime next month, we have a hearing and we invite the public to come tell us what they think about this list and about things that might not be on this list. And I'm talking now about the left-hand side. I think the right-hand side's totally different. But the left-hand side is what voters will be voting on, not the right-hand side. And then, and then, and then have that hearing and then figure out the process we're gonna go through to prioritize and also decide how much money we think that we can do. And those are, that has to kind of be done simultaneously. So, Willie, I'm sorry then.
I agree with, I agree with you.
Put your mic on, please.
I agree with what you're talking about and I don't know if, if we can do this, but, and, 'cause I don't have, I haven't, I don't have an idea of what this council is thinking about, what they may go out and ask the voters for. So, I mean, if, if we have that public hearing, sometime after that public hearing, we need to say, if we're gonna go out to approve $8 million in general obligations funds out of the general fund, general fund debt, what is that gonna do to your property tax rates? And then you go over to your water and wastewater and you say, well, we do X amount of funds or amount of projects to those funds, what is it gonna do to the utility rates on the water and sewer?
I think getting it, I mean, getting public input on the right-hand side could be really important, but we're not gonna, the council, the citizens are not gonna vote on that. Am I right, Mike?
Yes, I mean, I certainly think there's gonna come a point where we are gonna have to have some priorities and we will, you will need to hear from the staff and myself, but along with that, there's gonna have to be a schedule as to how much bonded indebtedness you want to take and that's going to dictate a lot. And I think we would like to have the public as part of our evaluation process so that we are very transparent and encompassing all views before we sit down and really start trying to whittle it down.
So, we're at the dreaming and imagining stage right now?
Yes, in my opinion, yes, sir.
And gathering information?
Right. That's why I felt it was important that you see where the tax dollars have gone for the last 10 years.
Kelly?
I agree with you, Mayor. I, I think we should have public input on this and I was wondering if it would be appropriate to combine it with the charter discussions as well, just because they're both on, be on the November election potentially.
The very note I just wrote down. So, I was gonna ask the council that question. Couldn't we in May, maybe the third week of May, or well, we can't do it the third, maybe the fifth week of May? Do we have a fifth?
Yes, we do.
The fifth Tuesday of May, have a, a joint workshop?
That's the 31st.
Limited by, by time, one to talk about the charter, one to talk about bond issues. And we'll have, you know, the new council will be in place and be organized and have one meeting under its belt.
In the meantime, I like Gary's idea too because nobody knows these projects better than the department heads and if they would...
I think I know something about them or I wouldn't have put them up here.
Nah, not you, Mike, just the department heads.
So, Mike's, so Mike, if your staff, if you and your staff were to come in or you were to work with your staff to bring in recommendations to us, what, at what point would that be?
I mean, I would like to hear from the citizens and, and all fairness, I mean, these were generated from departmental requests, I just didn't pull them out of the sky. And also, with some of the management of what we've done and where we see the city going and some of the requirements that we have to meet, no matter what we do. And so, I, I think it's at some point, if we're gonna expect the voters to approve this, we ought to be open to hear what they have to say before we become a peer that we focused on what we're gonna do and say, this is what we're gonna do, take it or leave it.
Yeah, so let me, so, pretty much agreement on that process? I mean, the 31st will do?
That's a bad day for me.
Uh, maybe we could do it? Oh, it's...
Yeah, for a holiday.
That weekend? Uh, how about, well, let's let, we'll let, we'll let the city secretary run a survey and try to find a time.
How about June 7?
Maybe not a Tuesday.
How about June 7th? That's first Tuesday in June.
That'd be great.
That'd be soon enough?
We couldn't go beyond that date too much.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta get moving. We'll, and we'll have plenty of time to publicize it, plenty of time to study, figure out what we're thinking about. Mike and I will have some good idea of how to, some recommendation for how to prioritize. Okay, that, done? Got that down? Thank you, ma'am. I would, I have a question though about this, the right half of the, the right half of the revenue bonds.
But you're gonna wanna know what the impact...
Yeah, we're gonna wanna know the impact, but, but is it, is it really the sort of thing that, that you would likely recommend that we not do some of this?
I mean, some of these, we don't have a choice.
And that, that's what I'm thinking. I, I don't, is that a separate process and, and those bonds need to be welded into the same deal or would, would, would we not deal those revenue bonds until after we had the election to see what we had or would we do that sooner?
Since these are what they call an enterprise fund, you, you're not, you're not required to get voter approval.
Right.
But these are the projects that have been identified that, from our perspective, are the most critical, especially the wastewater plant. They were put on there to show the council the magnitude, the debt that we're gonna have to incur over the next few years to keep our utilities at pace with the growth that's taking place in the city.
So, but I guess my real question is, are they two separate processes?
To a degree they are, but I, I do think it's important that overall, the council is aware of what we're looking at total bonded indebtedness over the next few years because this is a pretty big amount of money to be looking at.
The effect of the, of the right-hand side though is rates.
Yes, and impact fees.
And impact fees. The effect of the left side could be, or would be taxes.
Now, now, yes, and the council in the past has shifted some of the utility work to be supported by the general fund so it would not have as, as big a rate increase. And that's just, that's a policy discuss, discussion that we need some input from the council on.
All right. Anybody got any thoughts on we oughta, when we have our meeting, if we ought to bring up the right-hand side as well? Because we're not, we're, the real issue there is, is the impact.
But we are doing a rate and impact study because it's critical that you understand where your rates are going over the next few years.
But I'm just saying, do we wanna do that at the same time? That's my only question.
Oh, I, I think the council, I mean, based upon our, our current projections, we're gonna hit the 75% flow rate at the wastewater plant in 2019. So, that means by 2019, we're going to have to finish up the plans that were previously done and get them submitted to TCEQ or we'll be in violation of a regulatory requirement. I believe it's 2021 or 2022 that we're gonna have to have that plant operational and that could be moved up depending upon what we work out with West Bastrop Village.
I didn't ask the question clearly enough, Mike. Do we wanna process the revenue bonds on the 7th of June or do we want to have that as a separate part of our deliberations?
Maybe I'm not answering, I mean, what I'm trying to point out to the council is, as you do a bond election, it's gonna impact your taxes and as you do revenue bonds, it's gonna increase your rates. So, you're gonna see both of them going up at the same time. At what level are you gonna be comfortable with? So, I think that they both have to go hand in hand.
So, the issue of how much we try to, to pass is impacted by how much we have to sell.
Right, and on your, on your revenue side, you're required to have one and a quarter time to one and a half time coverage of your debt. And when you look at the, the amount of revenue bonds that we have to issue, I mean, we're looking at a substantial hike in our, our water and wastewater rates.
Right.
And I, and I just think the council needs to understand, that's why we're trying to get this rate study complete so that you can see how your tax rate is going up in comparison to how your water and sewer rate...
Is that likely to be done by June 7?
I would hope we'd have a draft report for the council by June.
Okay, then I think that answers it. Willie?
Could I ask one question of the manager? Mike, on the, on the right-hand side, on the enterprise fund improvements, I was listening to you, uh, putting you on the spot a little bit, or maybe not tonight, but at your, could you, on this same particular piece of paper, you know, check one or check, check the ones that you think are the most important and, or, you said they're all important and I understand that and I agree with that, but, you know, to be realistic, tell, tell me like the wastewater plant and, or whatever, the storage tank or...
Sure.
And kinda say which is, kinda like prioritize which ones and maybe go to a certain number, like five or six and see what, see what those costs might be.
Okay. If we, if we do June 7th as our meeting date, I'm, I'm not trying to make it a bigger meeting, but we have the, we'll have the west side wastewater study that we've been working on complete and we were planning on presenting that to the council on June 7th and I think that would help you and I'll, I'll be glad to do that, but you're gonna want that backup report presentation at the same time.
Well, I, you know, I, I agree with what you said a while ago and the reason I ask you that is 'cause if, if you had it welded out to strictly priority, priority driven, that, and you are right, we have done general fund debt subsidizing either, either water or the wastewater before, so, you know, that might be something we might look at as well, but I'm just trying to figure out, if you had it prioritized, what it might impact those rates?
Sure.
And then maybe we, we can go with, with general fund dollars to do that.
I understand what you want. Uh, I think we know what we're doing. Item D7, Mike?
Yes, this is consideration, discussion and possible action on authorizing the city manager to construct an 8-inch water main commencing from Old Austin Highway down Hassler Shore Road to the Bob Bryant Park and connecting into the ground storage tank located in Bob Bryant's Park. At this year's council plan retreat, I gave the council an overview of the city's aggressive program regarding annual maintenance of the city's groundwater wells used to provide the city's water supply. I apprised the council the fact that this aggressive well maintenance program had improved the efficiency and production of the groundwater wells. After reviewing all the data for the past couple of years, Mr. Cooper, the Director of Public Works, City Water Department staff and myself, see, we all work together here, have all reached the consensus that Well I can now pump an additional 200 gallons a minute above what is currently being produced from, at this time, from Well I. You may recall that Well I is the only well that is a deep water well and the source of groundwater for Well I is a Sims barocifer. As the council is aware, also aware, aware, excuse me, Well I has a TDS level that are higher than is allowed by TCEQ for potable drinking water. However, by blending water from Well H with Well I, the TDS levels combine, groundwater achieves TCE levels for potable safe drinking water. In order to take advantage of increasing the pumping capacity of Well I, additional water will be used to blend with the additional Well I water. The solution we've come up with and we are proposing to construct an 8-inch water line from the intersection of Old Austin Highway northward to Bob Bryant and once inside Bob Bryant to construct and route the water main to the ground storage tank. By installing this new 8-inch line, we will be able to increase the production capacity of Well I by approximately 50%, which is a significant amount to justify the work and expense. This increased water capacity achieved will serve approximately additional 288 customers on an ongoing basis for the city. The cost for these proposed is $120,000 for materials, city labor will be used to install the 8-inch line and I would recommend that I be given approval to do this.
Willie?
I'd make that motion and then I'll ask a question. Is there a second?
Second from, I think it was Doc down there. Willie, you wanna speak?
Could, Mike, let me ask this, kinda sounds, kinda, it's gonna sound stupid, but you, when you said that this improvements of additional 288 customers, uh, is 8-inch line, why, why an 8-inch line is maybe say...
Because we're gonna have to, we're not gonna use the full capacity of that line, we're gonna have to govern it down because...
Okay, you answered my question.
So, it's gonna be an operational issue that they're gonna have to work with out in the field to get the right blending combination. But we don't need all the water, but we need a line of about eight to be comfortable with.
Any other questions, discussion? And will you please call Earl?
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
In light of Mike's clarification of the ordinances, is there objection you're returning to item D1?
What is it?
Uh, appointment of Mr. Ennis. With no objection, we will, I will repeat and I appoint Bill Ennis to the Bastrop Arts and Public Places Task Force.
I'd make that motion.
Second. You wanna keep talking? I mean, any other discussion? All in, I'm sorry, would you please call Earl?
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Thank you all. We will, Bastrop City Council will meet in a closed executive session, present the Texas Government Code Chapter 551 at Sec. to discuss the following, Section 551-071A and Section 551-0712, consultation with attorney concerning potential pending threat and in our contemplated litigation claims and our settlement mediation, including but not limited to the following municipal water supply pending a potential code enforcement appeal and denials of requests for variances from zoning code and zoning board of adjustment action orders, litigation related to subdivision development, city statutory compliance issues and/or to matter upon which the attorney has a duty and our responsibility to report to the governmental body concerning these matters and/or other matters posted on the agenda. Deliberation regarding real, Section 551 dot 072, deliberation regarding real property, regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, disposition or value of real property and, what else, Mike? To discuss Section 551-087, to discuss, evaluate or deliberate regarding a commercial, financial business or other information that the city has received related to economic development opportunities or prospects... opportunities or prospects in or near the territory of the city. We are now in executive session.